Good evening, everybody. Appreciate you all joining us for our November Planning Commission meeting. We're gonna get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll lead you guys in knots and then Mr. Powell will leave us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray, Father, we love you and we thank you for this day. We thank you for the blessings you've given to us and we just ask that you would be over each one of us and all of Springdale and our leaders coming into this holiday season. We just count our blessings and we thank you so much for it. Be with us tonight, help us to make the right decisions, be with our leadership and thank you for this time, your name we pray. Amen.
Again, thank you guys for joining us for our November 7th, 2017 Planning Commission meeting. And I'll call this meeting to order if we can do roll call.
Gary Compton.
Here.
Roy Cobert. Vivian Haney. Shannon Mueller.
Here.
Peyton Parker.
Here.
Kevin Parsley.
Here.
Aaron Panado.
Here.
Brian Powell.
Here.
Dale Tyler.
Here.
And minutes from the previous month. Do we have any questions, comments?
Correct.
Do I need to mention the ones that I?
I mean, you can, but I went ahead and corrected it once I got your email.
Okay. Motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
Motion by Mrs. Haney. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Compton, Dr. Compton. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Let's see, we had a tabled item, but that was withdrawn. On there's our first section, Public Hearing, Rezoning, R-17-29, C.L. George and Sons Limited Partnership, nine acres north of Arkansas Children's Hospital Northwest, from A1 to C2, presented by McClellan Consulting Engineers.
Good evening. I'm Zach Hickson with McClellan and I'm here to answer any questions.
Have comments?
The adopted comprehensive land use plan indicates commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the city's economic base and tax structure through the promotion of healthy, stable commercial concentrations. Ensure adequate land allocation for commercial areas of sufficient size and in proper locations. And encourage the development of a wide range of commercial development for the residents and tourists to include neighborhood, community, and regional centers.
Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Compton.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Rezoning passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the ordinance that goes to council on the 28th.
Next item, R-17-30, Ron and Linda Skelton, 3700 Johnson Road, from A1 to SF2, presented by ESI.
Well, actually.
Okay.
I'm Ron Skelton.
Staff comments?
I'm sorry. Gotta get my place here. The comprehensive land use plan recommends neighborhood commercial use for the area. The rezoning request is in keeping, however, with the following goals and policies of the comprehensive land use plan is recommended for approval. Protect the positive aspects of neighborhood character throughout the city. Stabilize property values and maintain the integrity of neighborhoods by providing residential neighborhoods from non-residential influences and providing buffers between residential and non-residential uses.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Next section, Public Hearing on Conditional Use, C-17-13, EcoSite LLC, 4185 Treadco Drive, East Unit 33, self-support tower or antenna structure for a monopole in C2, presented by Scott Goble.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am Scott Goble. I'm the applicant. And I am here representing the property owner, Roger Harness, and EcoSite, which, if approved, would be the tower owner, and T-Mobile. Excuse me, T-Mobile has hired EcoSite to build a monopole-type cellphone tower in the area where our applicant's property is located. This would be a 120-foot-tall monopole tower. If approved, T-Mobile will be the anchor tenant and EcoSite will market space on that tower to other carriers. We are proposing to enclose the equipment at the base of the tower with a wood privacy fence and add landscaping on the outside of that fence. I do want you to know that before we brought a case for a new tower to you, we did do some thorough due diligence in our search area, looking for existing tall structures where we might co-locate antennas and found none. So this is why we're bringing you a case for a new tower. Any questions?
Staff comments?
The ingress and egress to the property is acceptable. Off-street parking and loading areas are acceptable. There's really not a requirement for refuge and service areas, except for the access to it, which is acceptable. Utilities are acceptable. Screening, as they're proposing, is acceptable. They're not proposing a sign, which would be non-applicable anyway. Yard requirements are acceptable. Proposed landscaping meets the requirements of the ordinance. It is generally compatible with the area that it's going into with the following conditions, and these are the conditions that we've discussed from the beginning. It has to be subject to the site plan approval, which we've already seen at the staff level and I think we're pretty confident with that. Lighting shall be minimal. You do have a lighting plan for the tower itself that meets with the FAA requirements. Structure and materials and hardware to be galvanized material. Does it have a backup generator?
Yes, it'll have a small propane backup generator.
Has to have a residential-type muffler, not powered by gasoline engine, is required. Conforms to the latest national code, including foundations, electrical, and steel. The wood fence around the area is an eight-foot fence.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Planting vegetation to control for inside, outside, and outside the fences required. Projects are designed to allow a secondary installation, which you've already said they're gonna market for additional users on that. So it's an acceptable site for that conditional use.
Just one question I have is on the, with Mercy going right across the street, or right across the interstate, right? You do have a helipad there. I've brought this up before, is there any concerns with that?
Well, they have to meet the lighting requirements that FAA requires and I don't know that they filed a flight plan for Mercy's local helipad yet.
We've obtained FAA approval for the site and, as I understand it, that's one of the supplemental requirements with our building permit application, once, if, and when we get to that point. So we will be providing that to the city when we ask for a building permit.
Okay.
We'll just have to get into it with the new.
I just wanna make sure it doesn't cause undue burdens between the two developments in there.
I don't know what, I don't know that we've seen what their flight patterns are for that location yet, but.
Okay.
We do have someone on staff who knows about airports and flight patterns and that kinda stuff, so we're in better shape of figuring that kinda stuff out than we were, so.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Conditional use passes eight zero.
Staff will prepare the resolution that goes to council on the 28th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, 17-10, that has been tabled. 17-11, Roush Coleman Homes, 3493 Plano Avenue, East Unit 34, model home, temporary marketing office, presented by Matt Walters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jason Apple with ESI.
You have a?
We do.
Yes, and Matt is here as well.
Okay.
We're requesting a conditional use for a model home and temporary office at this location and we'll answer any questions.
How long does? Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Is that not already there and hasn't that a sales office been there for quite some time?
I'm not sure.
It has been.
It has been.
Has been there for how long? That was my first question.
Been there for more than a year.
How long has it been used as that without a permit?
Honestly, I'm not sure. I've been here since March. I'm not gonna answer that question.
Well, there are only two lots left in the subdivision. Why is there a need for this model home to continue with this location for those two lots? And how long are you proposing?
We just wanna finish, we just wanna finish out the subdivision proposing a six-month conditional use at this location.
Any other staff comments?
Well, it meets all the other requirements. My only concern was because it's been there a while and the subdivision only has two lots left, the extension of the time. Do you have a sign at that location?
They do.
I think we do have a sign on the lot, so.
Which is the only place that you can have it. What are your hours of operation at that location?
Nine to six.
Nine to six, okay.
Seven days a week.
Seven days a week? And if you're proposing to close it in six months, then is there anybody, there's not anybody living in that house, correct?
Okay.
You can have one yard sign not to exceed the requirements for real estate signs in Chapter 98. I didn't look at the size of the sign, I just know there's one out there. Everything else, it seems to meet those requirements, it's just that it's been there a while already. Normally, a model home can only be there for one year with a one-year extension and I'm not sure how long it's been there. I don't have anything that documents how long it's been there, so I can't tell you unless somebody knows. But it's been there a while.
Yeah, I was curious how this became visible in this.
Your request is for six months.
Yes.
Is that it? Any questions or comments from the audience?
And this is listed as a conditional use. Technically, it is a temporary use, which is not really a conditional use. This is not one that has to go to council. It is, you can grant the temporary use for up to a year with one-year extension and so you can approve it based on that, it doesn't have to go to council, is my point.
So we're gonna vote for six months or one year?
They're asking for six months.
Okay, it's to the commission.
So the request is for a conditional or a temporary office, temporary marketing office model home, not to exceed six months from today if it's approved.
Correct.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney. And just before we do the vote on this, just a request for you guys. I would advise you guys to go through a complete review as far as where all you guys are building to make sure we don't have these types of issues again. This is the second time in the last couple of years that we've pretty much kinda helped you guys out in this whole piece. And it just needs to be more of a responsibility in this. This is, this is an oversight that shouldn't have happened in that whole piece. So it's just my comments back to Roush Coleman on it.
Are y'all gonna take these two together since it's?
No. We're gonna do these separately because it's two different locations.
What is the percentage that we generally put in for when, is it when all the lots have sold?
No, the ordinance says temporary office shall be closed and the model home shall be discontinued as a mobile home on or before the termination date says forth when we approve it, or after three months following the sale of all lots owned or being marketed by the applicant in the subdivision other than the model homes. Interior garage's walls must be removed and normal garage use must be restored, all signs must be removed, and all yard landscaping areas restored, so.
So after the six months, they would have to restore it?
Back to a garage and the house will be?
Sure. Okay.
And it could be, it could be, end up being less than that if the two lots sold next week, then three months from then?
Right. The problem we get into is we may not know when those two lots sell until they get a building permit and if somebody buys them and doesn't start right away, we may not know when that timeframe happens. Some of that's kinda hard to keep up with.
All right.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs. Haney.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Passes eight zero. Next conditional use, 17-12, Roush Coleman Homes, 2544 Seabright Avenue, East Unit 34, model home and temporary marketing office presented by Matt Walters or Jason Apple.
Thank you. Same situation here, requesting a temporary use, temporary office and model home for this location. This one, we would like a year.
Okay. Is the structure under construction right now?
We have not started construction on this.
Okay, so it's hard for me to address that everything has been met because there's not a structure there yet. And if the one year starts today, how soon are you gonna start this house?
As soon as, we're already working on filling out the building permit applications right now.
Okay, okay. Cause if your year starts today and you don't get it open for six months.
Yes, ma'am.
Your marketing office hasn't allowed, hasn't, that's why I'm asking, do you want this to go into effect now or do you want it to go into effect when you get your CFO or? It's kind of a unique situation to get one when you haven't started the house.
Sure. Well, I'm perfectly fine with us proceeding and going into effect now. It means that obviously we'll have a little bit of delay and we may have to come back, you know, if the house is, we've only had in operation for, call, eight, seven, eight months, we may have to come back and request an extension, but I'm perfectly fine if you guys are willing to approve it, to proceed.
We're assuming that it's going to have the appropriate sidewalks and loading areas and off-street parking and utilities and screening and everything there, but I can't answer that because it's not in existence today, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So can we approve this without it?
Well, they take the risk of getting it approved today and their year starts and they can't actually use it for however long it takes to build a house. And that would probably mean that they're going to be back to ask, you gonna sell all the lots in a year?
I'd love to be able to sell them all in a year. That would be outstanding. I don't know for sure. I'd hope that we could get substantially finished, but it's more than likely we would be back for an extension.
The only other option that I see is that could be done would be when they get a CFO, to occupy the structure, then we get notified from the building inspector that they got a CFO and the timeframe starts from then.
Sure. I mean, that would, that could, you know, make sure that all those items have been met as well if we do it that way.
And that's agreeable too, whatever's most convenient.
I think that gives them, it doesn't automatically mean they're gonna be back in six months or, if that year's time and have to ask for more stuff, for more time if we give it to them whenever the house, and then we know everything has been done like it should have been done before we actually let them open up the model home and the temporary office, so.
I got one question. What is the little building that's like one or two doors down from that?
That's our construction office.
Which they have to come in and ask for a variance for that because by ordinance, the temporary construction office is only supposed to be there until the final plat has been approved. The final plat has been approved. There is no provision in the ordinance to do a temporary construction office while the houses are being built, so they filed their, yes.
So that should be, should not be there.
Right, should not be there. And they have been told it needs to be moved, but they have filed a variance request, I believe, right? So you'll hear that variance request next month to see if that can be allowed beyond the timeframe of when it's supposed to be. Normally, we've never, I don't know of any other place where we've had a construction office for construction of houses. It's always been for the streets, the water and sewer, the storm drainings and stuff that goes in the subdivision, it goes away when the final plat is done, so. This is a little bit unique situation that they're coming in and asking for. I'm assuming you're building all the houses in this subdivision?
That is, yes, we are.
So you'll hear that variance request at the next meeting.
Let's just one comment, again, what I brought up earlier, I mean, everything seems to be a unique situation with Roush Coleman on this and, I mean, that's just my.
Yes, sir. And I understand that and I apologize and I can't speak to what happened before I was here, I was here in spring, but as far as the construction office goes, I did come up and request and ask and tried to make sure that we were doing the right thing prior and I think there was just a little bit of conflicting information, so we wouldn't have dropped it if we knew that we'd be in evolition, so it's definitely not an intention I apologize for.
Well, just, again, we seem to be in this situation making accommodations for Roush Coleman every single time.
Understood.
And that's just my comments that I have.
I just wanna clear up, we had several conversations between other people before it was put in there, so I'm not sure where you got the idea that you could put it in there.
Sure. I apologize, maybe it's just a conflict on my part. I just stopped up here myself in the office and asking and it could be an interpretation error on my end and I apologize.
Okay. Any questions or comments in the audience?
This is for the, okay, let's back up. Do you want it to go into effect now or do you want to go into effect when a CFO is issued?
If it's more preferable for the council with a CFO, that's agreeable.
So you're asking for a temporary, East Unit 34, model home, temporary marketing office at this location to be granted upon the issuance of a CFO?
Yes, ma'am.
And that would be for one year based on that?
Based off the CFO date, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Then we can do a call for question on that proposal.
Again, any questions or comments in the audience? It's to the commission.
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mrs.
On the revised.
Okay. The proposal that we're, we just talked about. Okay.
You will, okay.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Heiler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, preliminary plats, replats, and final plats. Final plat on 17-04, the mansion at Mill Creek, east side of Mill, west side of railroads, presented by Civil Design Engineers.
My name is Ferdy Fory with Civil Design. The purpose of this request was to subdivide the property that is currently under construction into five lots as shown there and to record easements for public utilities.
It's all still saying in one ownership, the way we approve the PUD.
Right.
Really creates different lots for financing mechanisms and removing the floodplain from some of the other areas as far as financing is concerned, correct?
Right.
It's not really subdividing the property to sell it in different pieces, it's just a management tool that they need to make this project move forward. Little bit different than what we normally have, but what we approved in the PUD hasn't changed.
No.
Yeah.
Any addition?
You need to show the location, names of all the streets and the private roads. Need to add the certificate of transmittal ownership in the ordinance. You need to put the signature certificate of acceptance on it with all the signatures. Comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval. Show the extent of the floodplain and floodway and the excess easement is needed for lot number three.
Yes.
Any questions or comments in the audience? To the commission.
Motion to approve, sub-staff comment.
Motion by Mr. Powell.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Haney.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Thank you.
Final plat passes eight zero.
If you want this to go to council next Tuesday evening, the ordinance needs to be in our office. Be nice if you could have it tomorrow at noon, but no later than Thursday at noon.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next section, large-scale developments, L-17-24, Weshao, Soang, Sang Dharma, 2124 North 48 Streets. Also have a waiver for street improvements, 17-15, concept of detention, and then variance B-17-46, variance modification of fencing requirements presented by Ozark Civil Engineering.
Good evening, all. I'm Spencer Butler with Ozark Civil Engineering. I'll be here to answer any questions if you have any.
Staff comments?
Screening fence is required in accordance with Chapter 56. You need to show the trees. Now, you're proposing a different kind of screening fence, what are you proposing?
For the screening, we are going to do trees along the, both of the north and south property lines for then the extent of the development.
No fencing of any other kind, just trees?
Just trees, yes, ma'am. There were no fences located in any of the surrounding properties, so.
Streetlights are required at each intersection along the street at the intervals of 3 to 350 feet, but you're asking for a waiver of street improvements, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
You're including the streetlights as part of that as well?
Yes, ma'am.
The developers are required to dedicate right-of-way of a budding street in conformance with the City of Springville Master Street Plan. A separate dedication document shall be submitted for the city for filing. All comments from the utility companies and any other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans. The development must comply with the City of Springville Commercial Design Standards or if variances required. Front sight and rear elevations, lighting plan, and written response to the design comments are required. And I think you got, elevations are included in the packet, so you've had a chance to see those with the materials that's being used. The only thing that is not identified is the color of the stucco?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you'll get back with us so that we know what that is and it, it meets the standards required there.
Yes, ma'am.
Need detailed drawings of enclosures and screening methods. We just talked about the fence or wall. The concept of detention must be approved by the planning commission and easement shall be provided in plans for detention facilities. Need a copy of the filed easements for our records before approval.
Anything else? Any questions or comments in the audience? If you'll come up to the mic and state your name and address for me, please.
My name is Dane Anglin and I own the property right next door. I can't tell you what the address is, I just drive there. The, can I ask him a question?
Sure, yeah.
Ask a question.
Say about the fence again. You said there were no fences?
If you can come up to the mic and just. If you can come up to the mic and just.
We didn't notice any fences that were up to the commercial design standards located in the surrounding area.
What about my fence?
You do show a barbed wire fence on.
Barbed wire fence, yes.
You show a barbed wire fence on both, on the north side for sure, right?
Yes, ma'am.
No, I've got a chain link fence that comes up and that keeps my dogs in, and I've got a fence all the way back to the back of my property which stretches the back of theirs, I don't care about what they do, but I want to know about my fence, what I got to do.
Well, you're not required to do anything, they are required to screen between the adjacent property owners, not do anything to your fence, they can add an additional fence there because the requirement for fencing is on them, not you.
Okay, so they don't touch mine?
Yes, we will not touch your fence.
And they're proposing not to put up a fence, they're proposing to only put trees as a screening mechanism.
You put fence if you want to, I don't care, it cuts noise out, but as far as the, on the deal that I got, it says a huge building complex, is it going to be something where they're renting out to people, and people's going to be living in there, or is that going to be a church?
It will be a church.
It'll be a church?
Yes, sir.
Who's living there?
The monk will be living there.
And I think they're already on site now, right?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, they are, they are, but the way the paper sounded, when you say a big building complex.
A large scale, yeah, large scale.
Large scale.
So you can see the size of the buildings they're adding on to, it is approximately how many square feet?
Two thousand four hundred and seventy-one, approximately, so it's size of a house roughly.
Okay.
Large scale development term is the term that we use because the site is more than an acre.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean the building is, has to be really large, it's just the size of the acre is there, building on.
All right, moving my fence along, right?
Yep.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, if you can.
Need to come to and give us your name.
I just wanted to know.
Can you state your name for the?
How it's going to affect my property.
Can you give us your name and address, please?
I live across the street from them.
Okay, and your name?
Mary Gilli.
Okay, across the street, across, you have a single family home over there, there are, all of their activity is going to be on the west side of the street.
On the west side, so not?
Right, right.
Okay, so it's not going to.
And you're not changing the driveway location, are you?
No, ma'am.
The existing driveway that's there will be paved, is it paved already?
It's not paved right now, it is gravel right now, and we will be paving.
Okay, so not going to affect my property? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments in the audience? To the commission?
You know, I guess I have a little bit with the fencing, because with the different churches, and you start getting groups of people in, a fence will help with sound and being a good neighbor to contain outdoor activities they've got going on.
Does your landscaping plan show how many trees, what kind, and how close together they're going to be?
Yes, ma'am, it does.
Okay, Aaron, can we get to their landscaping plan, did you load it? Can you tell us approximately how many trees you're intending and how close together they're going to be?
There's some existing trees already out there, and then we will add in five, one, eleven new trees we will be adding in, they should be roughly sixty foot apart from middle of tree to middle of tree, and it will extend back five hundred and five feet, the extents of the development.
So there's a sixty foot gap between trees?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
How tall, what kind of trees, and how tall will they be?
That's not giving a buffer to the neighbor.
I was hoping you were going to say you were putting some evergreens in there, and they were going to be putting really close together to kind of create that screen.
What I'm reading on the plant schedule on here, these are maples, so you're not dealing with evergreen trees, it's going to give as far as actually a sound barrier.
I will say if the variance is denied, they will have to go back and meet the requirements of the, of the commercial design standards, or have to come back and ask for a different variance of proposing something different between, besides this.
Okay.
And, yeah, and then have you considered a payment in lieu of for your street improvements?
That's part of the waiver fee we've requested, let me get that out for you. The temple is willing to dedicate right of way for the street improvements, in lieu of the payments, they don't have a lot of money to do this kind of payments in lieu of the street improvements.
So they're required to dedicate right of way and provide street improvements, so that's.
Okay, because, I mean, you know, financial hardship is generally not something that we can look at.
And really, it's a recommendation to the council, the council has to make a decision whether or not they want to waive street improvements, because in essence, if they waive it, then the taxpayers pick up that cost, and the council's the only one can actually commit city funds, so you would be making a recommendation to the council whether or not you think that this street improvement should be waived or not.
So what do we need to start with?
And you could make the recommendation that it be payment in lieu of improvements, if you want to make that as part of your recommendation. How much frontage do you have on the road itself, how wide is the lot?
Very narrow lot.
Yeah, it's very narrow, it's a hundred and sixty-five feet.
Yeah, we wouldn't necessarily want a hundred and sixty-five feet widened out, because sometimes that creates a, more of a hazard than it helps, but payment in lieu of improvements goes to the city, when that street improvement is done, we have some funds to put with it.
You know, to me, it's something that's going to be bringing in people from other neighborhoods in, and perhaps neighboring people walking in, so those improvements, to me, is important.
That area, you're not going to have very many neighboring people walking in, because it is a very narrow street.
Today it is.
Yeah, today it is, you're right, I mean, it's just.
But that's, you know, our next area of growth, it could surprise us.
But if you, if we do extend from Walmart down that way, which is a possibility, then yeah, you're right, I can see there could be some good, some, right now, there's, that neighborhood just doesn't promote it.
I think what you're asking is, would they consider payment in lieu of?
Right, I mean, that would be my recommendation would be.
I can't speak on behalf of them, I do not know that answer right now.
So which one do we need to start with?
Well.
Or when you want to start with?
Okay.
Let's just make sure we address everything on there, so, I mean, he can't speak on that one, so we need to vote as far as the waiver on that, on that whole piece. The other thing that we were talking through earlier, because I don't think we kind of closed that discussion on there, is, I mean, your landscaping that you have.
Yes, sir.
Is not, I mean, these are maples through here, so as far as the sound barrier piece, I don't know that that's really going to, I mean, would they consider other landscaping options, or even a fence to be put in?
Absolutely, we could do more trees.
So you're flexible as far as this whole piece?
We're very flexible, yes, sir.
Okay.
So if the waiver is not granted, I mean, the variance is not granted for the modification of the fencing requirements, they will have to come back with a proposal that meets the requirements, or come back and ask for another variance.
Okay.
Based on whatever else they think they could do, if the variance is not approved. It's a call for the vote.
So you want us to go ahead and vote on this, and then depending on this, you may have to come back?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just want to make sure we had clarity on these things here, so, we've got two, call for the votes, and then a waiver which would be a recommendation, I would suggest we start with a variance.
I'll call for the vote on the variance for the fencing.
Okay, call for the vote for Mrs. Haney on the variance.
Panado?
Let me just clarify, so the variance is, there's not going to be a fence, right? Okay, no.
Powell?
Yes.
Heiler?
No.
Compton?
No.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
No. Okay, the variance does not pass, seven to one.
I understand you'll have to modify the plan to meet the current standards, or you'll have to file for another variance to be heard next month.
Yes, ma'am.
And then the waiver of street improvements? Motion, recommendation?
This is based off of a, they're going to.
You know, I'm.
The way, are we going to, are we going to do it the way they want it?
He can't, he can't make that recommendation on their behalf.
So we're going based off of what the waiver is?
They're asking for you to recommend a waiver, you can recommend it with a total waiver, or with payment in lieu of, your recommendation be whatever this body thinks is.
I would make a motion to approve the waiver with payment in lieu of.
Okay. And in lieu of, okay, just make sure your client understands that, okay?
Yes, sir.
And it's the hundred and sixty feet width of the property to Master Street Plan Standards, including sidewalks, curb weather, and drainage and streetlights.
Okay, I'll second the motion.
Okay, so we have motion by Mrs. Haney, second by Mr. Powell.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes. Waiver and payment in lieu of passes eight zero, and then we have concept of detention, we call for the votes.
Call for the vote on the concept of detention.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Concept of detention passes eight zero, and then large scale, this be a motion.
Subject to staff comments. Make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Haney, second by Mr. Powell.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Concept of detention passes eight zero, and then large scale, this be a motion.
Subject to staff comments. Make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Haney, second by Mr. Powell.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes. Waiver and payment in lieu of passes eight zero, and then we have concept of detention, we call for the votes.
Call for the vote on the concept of detention.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Heiler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Heiler?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Concept of detention passes eight zero, large scale.
Approve, subject to staff comment.
Motion by Mr. Powell?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Haney.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Large scale passes eight zero, thank you. Next item, large scale, seventeen dash thirty-two, speedy splash car wash, forty-three fifteen Elm Springs Road, concept of detention presented by Bates and Associates.
I'm Jason Yell with Bates and Associates.
Any additional comments or anything on this, or?
No, this is a, it's a car wash, there's one automatic car wash, and then four base for self-serve, and associated detention and landscape parking lot improvements.
Staff comments?
Show all existing easements, is there an existing easement on the east side of the property for water and sewer, please correct the handicap stall to reflect eleven foot, not eight, comments from the utility companies and other city departments must be addressed prior to approval of construction plans, minimum twenty foot wide drainage easement shall be provided around the hundred foot, hundred year flood pool connecting the tributary pipes and the discharge system along the most possible routing of the piping system, ownership of the detention pond will remain with the land, the concept of detention must be approved, City of Springdale detention retention certification form must be completed, stamped, and signed by a certified professional engineer, post-development, and submitted to the City of Springdale Engineering Department.
All right, any questions or comments from the audience? If you'll come up to the mic, state your name and address, please.
Bill Matthews, fourteen sixty-eight East Mountain Road here in Springdale, I also own the McDonald's restaurant on Elm Springs Road, forty-seven sixty-two, and I actually own this property that we're planning to sell, our family does, we just think it's going to be a great project, right now, there's no car washes in that end of the city, and if you look at the size of the property, it's, it fits that property perfectly, the other thing is, it's not a restaurant, so we don't eat anymore restaurants, just kidding, but.
That's a brave statement there.
Except McDonald's, no, I mean, if you look at the schematics, the architectures, I think you see it's going to be a very attractive building, and I think it's going to fit well on that quarter, so I would appreciate your support of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews, any other questions or comments? To the commission?
Call for the vote on the concept of detention.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Concept of detention passes eight zero, large scale.
Make a motion to approve, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Haney, second by Mr. Powell.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Large scale passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Next large scale, L seventeen dash thirty-three, Fifty-Sixth Street Office Building, nine acres north of Arkansas Children's Northwest, concept of detention presented by McClellan Consulting Engineers.
Zach Hickson again with McClellan, here to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Show all existing easements, frontage easements is a one we had a question about, the exterior ground mounted or building mounted equipment included but not limited to your mechanical utilities and banks of meters shall be screened from public view with landscaping with an architectural treatment compatible with the building architecture, copies of parcel deeds used for off-site drainage must be provided, the concept of detention must be approved by the planning commission, and easement will be required
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Large scale passes eight zero. Thank you very much. Now, that, that's a long section that we were doing, but as, as far as the large scale, I know the mayor will appreciate having that many because that's growth for the city. So, thank you guys and that whole piece, so. Uh, board of adjustments, B seventeen dash forty-two, James W. Robinson, Northwest Corner, Don Tyson Parkway, and George Anderson, variance of off-site sign presented by Jim Reed.
Jim Reed, Springdale City Council. I'm here to represent, uh, Mr. Robinson. I, uh, will tell you, I'm glad he had me represent him. He had open heart surgery the other day. He's doing great, doing real good, but, uh, we put pictures of the sign in your packet. It's a little sign. If you went out there to look for it, you didn't see it because he takes it down when he's not, when the season's over, and he does that every year.
Okay. Staff comments?
I don't have any comments. I did hear from Brian Hunt. He was gonna send me a letter supporting it, but I haven't seen it yet, so. But he did tell me he supported the sign.
Any questions or comments in the audience? It's to the commission?
Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, we've, we have denied some signs, but they were in more building, you know, shopping center areas that already had a lot of signs. And this area, that side of the road on both sides is just filled still, so, um, and I have seen the sign. I think that that would be hopeful.
So would this variance be for a period of time, or, I mean, we give that variance in?
He's not asking for a, a period of time. He's asking to be allowed to put that sign at that location, I guess, from now on, and he only puts it up during...
He only puts it up during produce season.
Yeah, takes it down after.
He does, he does have, in your packet, you have a letter from Mr. Taldo who owns the property. He also has an agreement with Mr. Taldo that if and when Mr. Taldo tells him he's sold the property, it's it, it's done, so.
Okay.
As long as the property stays like it is.
Do what?
As long as the property stays like it is, that's when his business is gonna be.
That's why I was asking that question.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, I think if the property were to change hands, then...
We wouldn't be in a position to enforce that agreement. That's between Mr. Robinson and Mr. Taldo, but, you know, we do know it's, it is in existence.
Okay. Let's be a call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Large scale passes eight zero. Thank you. Next large scale, uh, L seventeen dash thirty-three, Fifty-Sixth Street Office Building, nine acres north of Arkansas Children's Northwest. Concept of detention presented by McClellan Consulting Engineers.
Zach Hickson again with McClellan, here to answer any questions.
Staff comments?
Uh, show all existing easements, uh, drainage easements, as I wanted to question about. The exterior ground mounted or building mounted equipment included but not limited to mechanical utilities and banks of meters shall be screened from public view with landscaping with an architectural treatment compatible with the building architecture. Copies of parcel deeds used for off-site drainage must be provided. The concept of detention must be approved by the planning commission, and easement will be required for the detention facility. Need a copy of the file easement before approval.
All right. Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Call for the vote on the concept of detention.
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Tyler?
Yes.
Compton?
Yes.
Haney?
Yes.
Mueller?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Parsley?
Yes.
Panado?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Large scale passes eight zero. Let's see, B seventeen dash forty-six is done. B seventeen dash fifty-eight, Daniel Montez, thirty-eight fifteen Williams Cove, variance for reduction of side setback from eight feet to zero feet presented by Daniel Montez.
I'm Daniel Montez. I'm here to answer any questions y'all have.
Staff comments?
Explain to us what, what's going on.
Uh, basically, I was unaware of, of the side variant, or the setbacks on the side. Purchased a boat and needed somewhere to store it out of the rain and, and, uh, and snow, and built an awning for the boat on the side of the property which encroaches on the, uh, setback. So now I'm basically asking if I can, uh, get a variance to offset that setback and, uh, keep the boat awning there. Um, you know, required by y'all to send out the certified letter. I'd also made additional copies and went to my neighbors and let them know that this was coming and to, uh, just kind of do a face-to-face greeting with them. And the neighbor that it goes towards her house, uh, Mrs. Walker, she's, uh, doesn't have any complaints about it. I know she's not here, but she did tell me that, and then, uh, all the other neighbors didn't have any kind of concerns about it. Um, yeah, so any comments or... And I do apologize for not, you know, had I went through the, the process of getting a building permit and all this, I would've found out about the setbacks that way and not have constructed the structure. Um, I did submit some photos of the structure. I mean, it's not an eyesore, uh, in my eyes, you know, but I also am getting the benefit of it, so.
Staff comments?
You need to come up here, Debbie, if I said to...
Same comment. Fire department does not support rear side setbacks.
This puts it right at the property line, correct?
Yes.
And it is an all wooden structure?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it has, uh, shing- shingles on the roof, but, uh...
Mike, you have comments?
The only comment we would add is the structure can't remain as it is. If you grant the variance, you're still gonna have to take it down and rebuild it so it is fire-rated in essence, concrete and steel. It's all it could be.
So if we grant the...
Anything less than five foot requires that.
Okay. If we grant the variance, then it has to come down and he has to reconstruct it, okay?
Out of like galvanized steel or something?
And would you still be asking for the full width of eight feet? Because it looks like you got a little extra room, that it doesn't have to be that wide.
Right, yeah, with the way my driveway is poured, I need that entire ten-foot span to get a seven-foot boat, and I still have, you know, a little bit of room on each side. So, yeah, I would like to keep the...
Okay, so you're going to ask that the, the variance request remain at, from eight to zero, with the understanding that you have to reconstruct? If it is granted, you still have to reconstruct the awning or the, whatever you wanna call it, right?
Okay.
To meet fire code?
Yes.
But still leaving the setback the way it is?
He still wants it to be zero. He wants it to be that full width, if it, if the variance is granted.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? It's to the commission?
There's a comment. I think it's, I mean, the houses are very close together already, and then you've got the wood fence, now you've got a boat that has gasoline in it.
Do you call for the vote?
Call for the vote?
Call for the vote by Mrs. Haney.
Compton?
No.
Haney?
No.
Mueller?
No.
Parker?
No.
Parsley?
No.
Panado?
No.
Powell?
No.
Tyler?
No.
This variance does not pass eight zero.
You have the right to appeal, but you have to appeal through circuit court. And then you have thirty days to file the appeal, and after that thirty-day time period, if you don't file the appeal, it needs to come up, okay?
My, the fence that's, um, I mean, I, probably another option for you is have the fence in front of that and be able to back the boat. I, I get it as far as you want to get covered, but you may as far, I mean, there's other ways to cover the boats other than actually building a structure on that, probably.
Yeah, right, like a tarp or something. Yeah, okay, yeah. And then the fence, I, I didn't understand your comment about the fence.
Well, the fence is set back further on the property.
Correct, twenty-five feet past.
So, I mean, it, could he put the fence closer here?
He can put the fence all the way up to the front, setback, all the way to the front of the house if he needs to, where you could put it behind the fence itself.
It's, I'm not, that's not an issue. It's covering it for, you know, the tarps and stuff, they only do so much in actual structure, so.
I understand. I'm just giving you some...
All right, thanks.
Other options in that one, so, okay? Thank you. Next item, B seventeen dash fifty-nine, Jaws Trucking LLC, ten-twelve Schmieding Avenue, variance for, to allow modified parking and having equipment on a non-paved surface and other vehicles to park on a paved surface presented by Wade Camps.
Uh, yes, uh, we're asking for variance to, uh, park, uh, vehicles on the, heavy, heavy equipment vehicles on the unpaved parking, and then we're also gonna add paved area for vehicles that do not, that are not considered, uh, heavy equipment.
I remember this variance came in before, and, uh, we, we spent some time talking about how can we, how can we adjust this to give them some time and see how the, how their business model's gonna work, and if they can expand their parking areas. So the seventy-by-twenty area that's on the north side of the property would be for those, uh, semi-trailers, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And they would be able to come in and out of that gate on the side, so when they're not coming all the way across the, the parking lot as such. The other paved area on this side is to park vehicles, uh, smaller trucks, uh, box trucks, pickup trucks, those kind of things that are left there, your service vehicles?
Yes.
And then the remaining area would be not paved. Uh, what do you, what surface are you putting down on there?
Um, we have at least, uh, six inches of, uh, was it number two gravel on there?
So that they can park heavy equipment in those areas?
Mm-hmm. Yes, that's correct.
And we came back with some modifications that we kind of suggested at the last meeting, but we had to go back and look at different areas that they could make it work. It's my understanding, after you and I talked, if, if the demand increases and you need more paved area, you could move forward with paving more area if you're gonna have to park in areas larger than what you're proposing now.
Yes, that's correct. We'd like to pave the whole area as we grow.
This kind of gives them some time to grow the, grow the business and see how it's gonna work. You know, we're, we're not allowing businesses or some of this equipment to be taken home and parked in neighborhoods, and they're looking for places to park it. They also have a management agreement that doesn't allow anybody to stay on, in their vehicles at night, because that was one of the concerns. We, we had talked about if they were parking, uh, semi-trailers, you know, trucks there, that they wouldn't be able to park in those, so their managed agreement addresses all of that. So I think they've, I think they've addressed all the concerns we had at the last time that the variance was, was addressed.
Is there a time associated with this? You said to work as far as the business model over a period of time.
What are you proposing to have the pavement and all that completed?
Um, to be absolutely sure, we're asking for eighteen months at the outside. Um, there, there's certain financing that we have to go through that might take some time.
You would be asking for a bill of assurance to complete this, just this amount of paving in eighteen months?
Yes.
Are the, the semis, are they gonna be parked on the pavement, right? That's...
Within the end of the eighteen months, that's where they have to be paved.
Yes, yes.
Other than that, they're not allowed to park the semis on the gravel?
My concern is, and I, and we've talked about this, he knows and I'm concerned about the timeframe, it's kind of long. That's, that's a pretty long period of time, I think a year. We, we do a lot of one-year bill of assurances. I think that would be a little bit more standard than what we've done to be able to do that in a year, and I know you and I've talked about that. You know...
Yeah.
Where I'm coming from, so.
How long has the business been there?
Uh, we've been there for about two years. We purchased the building two years ago.
Have you used it for this all the time that you've been there?
No, no, we just start, it, it just started out where we bought the property and we're using the shop area, and then, uh, several people approached us, saying that they needed parking because the cities tell them that they couldn't park the dump trucks or the vehicles in their property, and, uh, this is a perfect...
And any maintenance would be in the shop area itself. There won't be any maintenance on the, on the lot itself. We've had that discussion too.
Yes.
That's why it's marked with the maintenance shop area, so that's the only place that maintenance would have.
So in the article, it says that vehicles have to be backed to the building setback line. Is there space?
I'm sorry?
Well, it says chapter, maybe ten, article seven, um... Storage areas shall be set back from property lines in accordance with the setbacks required for structures in the zoning district to which the storage area is located.
They only have to be a certain distance off of the property line. There are those, there, the, the front setback, they meet the front setback as far as that's concerned. The only difference with this is in an existing business that you pull directly off the street to park in front of the building. But inside the fences and stuff, it's, it's behind the front setback, as far as that's concerned.
Okay.
Uh, then around the edges, I think it's, is it five foot off the edge of the property? You and I talked about that, I don't remember what it is now.
It's, yeah, yeah, at least five, yeah.
So nothing would be parked within five feet of the edge of the property, otherwise.
Okay, because right now, things are past the property line, from what I see.
We, we were talking about that would have to be pulled back, and nothing would be within five foot of the property line all the way around. It's commercial all the way around it, so it's not, it's not a residential activity that's adjacent to it anywhere, so.
And we did this with somebody else, and they were required to have a drive to ads that were concrete.
Well, their proposal is that they will drive in from the paved area on the front to get that parking space over there, and then the trucks will come in on the side. We discussed that, but they didn't add any drive. As far as the semis going in and the smaller vehicles, they could pull directly off into those parking spaces. Here, they got, they still gotta maneuver off the side in order to be able to get into that paved parking area, but...
If I can add, one reason why we don't want to add driveways, we don't want to cut our access off to the shop if we have a bulldozer or something in there, and if it's parked in the back, we want to be able to drive it all the way to the shop without it encroaching on any kind of concrete or pavement of any kind.
There may be rubber tracked equipment sometimes, or maybe tracked equipment, there may be, you know, dump trucks.
Understand.
Kind of a unique situation because a combination is not something that you're going to know of to be able to move it.
Any other questions or comments?
Call for the vote.
Call for vote by Mr. Powell.
Haney.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
No.
Compton.
Yes.
That passes six, too.
You need to come by the office, and we need to work out the bill of assurance. That's the eighteen-month bill of assurance, because that's what they asked for.
Okay, thank you.
You need to come by the office, and we need to get that put together.
Thank you. Next section, waivers, W seventeen dash eighteen, Marty and Melanie Tisi, eighty-seven twenty-seven East Wagon Wheel Road, waiver of sidewalk requirements presented by Marty and Melanie Tisi. I apologize if I got your last name wrong on that.
You got it right.
TZ.
Uh, we're asking for a waiver on a sidewalk. We're building a new house at eighty-seven twenty-seven East Wagon Wheel Road. Presently, on Wagon Wheel Road, there are no sidewalks from the I forty-nine corridor all the way down to one-twelve corridor. So, to put a sidewalk along the front of my property would kind of be like a sidewalk to nowhere. Not to mention, it's about a ten-foot drop from Wagon Wheel down to level property. And we wouldn't really know where to put it because we don't have curb, we don't have So, we'd really like to not have to do that. And it's about four hundred feet, so it's, it's a sizable sidewalk.
Staff comments?
You know, I don't usually recommend for sidewalk waivers. This is a little bit of a unique situation. It is not an area that is, because of the drop-off in the area that they're in, it's kind of a tough situation to put a sidewalk in. You know, it's one of those situations, we could do payment in lieu of improvements, that could be the recommendation, but I just don't know that building a sidewalk right now serves any purpose for this piece of property.
The terrain in that area is, it's very complicated to do anything like that.
And I don't normally...
Well, no, and even...
One of those tough ones that would be tough.
Even if that roadway is designed to be constructed at some point down in the future, it's going to take major design to build. They did put in a sidewalk in the future on the road design, we'd probably wipe out that sidewalk.
More than likely.
Oh, there's no doubt about it.
If there was a payment in lieu of, would it be just the cost of the sidewalk, or would it be the cost of the engineering?
No, it would just be the cost of the sidewalk.
So, so every other house, they have to pay the cost of the sidewalk? So, that could be put in and lessen...
And I think it's usually ten, twelve, fifteen dollars a foot. I don't remember. I don't know what the going price is right now, but that's usually what it is in that range.
Would you consider doing payment in lieu of?
If I have to, yeah. Four hundred foot's a big sidewalk.
That's a, that's a lot of payment in lieu. Or something that's not really able to be done.
Yeah, if it comes to the...
Especially if it's going to be wiped out, if you real, if you do some improvements down the road.
Right, right, but you can, you can pay, pay the amount and not put it in now, and then the city later on would engineer it as they improve that property, I mean, that street.
Jim?
Jim Reed, Springdale City Council. This is out in our ward, and, and I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, if we ever design that street, there won't be any pavements, sidewalk's done by the homeowners. It'll all be done in the design. It'll all be done with the design. So, I don't think we would take, I don't think taking a payment in lieu of is the case in this part. I really don't.
I think payment in lieu of is a good option that we have, but in this situation, it's, we had a flatter area that would be able to be done in a normal circumstance. This is not a normal circumstance area, so I'm not in favor of having, if y'all want to do it, fine, but...
We'd rather not.
Right.
Any other comments from the audience? To the commission?
We're going to take this as the waiver states.
They're asking for you to recommend a waiver of the sidewalk.
Call for the vote. This be a...
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Seven, Stafford, comments? Motion by Mr. Powell?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tyler.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Waiver passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will they need to come to...
This will go to council meeting, I'm sorry. Staff will prepare the resolution, I want to pay attention, and it'll go to council at the, on the meeting on the twenty-eighth.
All right, thank you.
It's already moving on, sorry.
All right, we have a couple of other items on the agenda. Springdale Storage, L sixteen dash twenty-two, Northwest Corner of North Thompson and Cooper Drive, one-year extension from November first, twenty-seventeen to November first, twenty-eighteen, presented by Henry Jordan.
Well, if you've been up by that way and looked at those storages, they look really good, looking at them from the street. Mr. Jordan's just asking that we extend his large scale because he's, you haven't started all the rest of it. We want to make sure that the large scale doesn't lapse if he doesn't start in that timeframe, and it's just to give him an extra year.
Exactly right. We're just, construction's moving a little bit slower and going into the winter months, I just think it's going to take a little bit longer, and we want to make sure it's built.
Right.
How we want it and how y'all want it, so I'm just asking for a one-year extension.
Any questions or comments from the audience? To the commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
I didn't hear who. Uh, second by Mr. Alvarez.
Parker.
No, I'm sorry. My mind's just...
Yes.
Sorry.
Okay, so who's seconded?
Panado.
Okay, well, there you go.
I had two things on my mind at the same time on there, just...
Okay, Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Panado.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Compton.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Passes eight zero. I had one question on your, on the south end of that property. It's really steep, but you guys put a lot of grass there.
The tension pump.
Well, it is, but I just didn't know as far as the erosion that would happen on that over time.
Well, it's, it was designed, and it has been constructed according to the design.
I mean, the property looks great on there.
A lot of rip wrap with the...
Okay.
The mats up under it and the sidewalk and, uh, it, I've been with Patsy quite a bit.
It's an extensive operation in there, but there's a lot of it that comes down through there, and it's, uh...
Yeah, I just didn't want it...
It's the way it's designed, so it's as good as its engineer is, so.
Okay, great.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you. Let's see, next one, L sixteen dash fifteen, Ozark Point Place West, north of West Sunsets, east side of fifty-six, one-year extension. It was approved September twenty-sixteen, presented by Kelly Hamblin.
We have a, okay. Leonard can talk.
Okay.
Leonard Gabbert with James Layout Services. I was the one that designed this thing, and, and we would like to ask for an extension on it. If you have any questions, just ask.
Okay, I didn't think so. Staff, any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, it's to the commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Haney. Second by Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Tyler.
Yes.
Yes.
Haney.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Parker.
Yes.
Parsley.
Yes.
Passes eight zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next item is just the schedule for twenty-eighteen as far as meeting dates and submission deadlines.
We are pretty confident we have all the dates on here, right? We did find a couple last year that we missed the date, but, you know, we're pretty confident that's what it is. So, if y'all adopt this, that puts us into a position where we know what the deadlines are and can stick with us as we go through the next year.
Supposed to be a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mrs. Haney.
Second.
Who had the second? Okay, second by Mr. Powell.
Yes.